I have a special guest with us tonight. I have from First Baptist Church, our new youth minister that started out in December. He's coming from Bardstown, Kentucky. We have Blake Sapp. He's going to come up to the podium and give us our invocation.
Thanks Mayor Alcott. If you guys would, let's pray. Father God, we just thank you for your mercy. We thank you for this day, a beautiful one that it has been, Lord. We just want to thank you for all the individuals in this room and who they represent and what they represent, Lord. And I pray that as the night continues, we just want to pray for the leadership of this country, for this state, and specifically for the leadership of this city that we all love dearly, Lord. Pray that everything be done in an orderly conduct that is glorifying to you. We love you. We thank you. In your son's heavenly name we do pray. Amen.
Blake, I will lead you. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Everybody be seated. I am a Star Wars nerd, and it is May the 4th, so may the 4th be with you. My favorite character was always Han Solo, and he says, "Never tell me the odds." So that'll be our quote for tonight. We are very lucky. We've had this on horizon. We actually, I'm going to have Melinda. Oh, we're going to do roll call. Sure, sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Perigin.
Here.
Mayor Alcott.
Here. Melinda, would you like to bring up our guest?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd be honored to. It's with great pleasure we introduce you to tonight Coach Spader and five of the seniors from the Bowling Green High Football Team. We finally get to recognize them for their state championship. So gentlemen, if you'll come on up front, we have a proclamation, and this was their seventh state championship. We're so proud of you and thank you for being here tonight. You represent our city well, yes, face out there so everyone can see you all.
All right. We have a proclamation to read, and I'll start it off, and then I'm going to hand it to Dana, Carlos, Melinda, Sue, and then I'll finish it up when you get there. So Office of Mayor of Bowling Green, Kentucky, proclamation, "The season of Bowling Green Purples football 2020." Dana, right here.
Whereas the Bowling Green High School Football Team obtained a record of 10-2 winning season for 2020, and whereas...
Bowling Green High School Football Team won their sixth Kentucky 5A Football Championship game in 10 years, seventh overall in the UK Orthopedics State Football Finals, and...
And whereas the Bowling Green High Football Team won the championship game by a score of 17-7. Whereas the Bowling Green High School Football Team and the coaching staff led by Coach Mark Spader has dominated high school football in 2020, and...
Bowling Green High School Purple fans are the greatest fans in Kentucky. We, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim 2020 as the season of Bowling Green Purples football in Bowling Green, Kentucky, and acknowledge this outstanding accomplishment in the area of high school athletics and encourage everyone to congratulate all members of the team and coaching staff. Hear, hear! Woo! Coach Spader, would you please introduce yourself, and then every player introduce yourself as well?
Here you go. Here you go. Coach Spader, would you please introduce yourself, and then every player introduce yourself as well?
I'm Mark Spader, head coach.
I'm Connor Cooper, quarterback.
I'm Dylan Echols, defensive back.
I'm Patrick Hightower, tight end.
Jordan Dingle, tight end.
Reese Jones, linebacker.
And I want to thank Ms. Hill for her patience with us. She tried to pull this together during basketball season. If you kept up with us then, we were highly successful and ended up in the Sweet 16. So I had to keep canceling and canceling, and now we're in the spring, and now we have baseball track going on. Well, finally, I just said, hey, I'm going to pull together a core of guys. We had 21 seniors. This is a great crosscut of the representation of our team. We have three elected captains. We have our quarterback, and we have what I call a program kid for Bowling Green High School, is a senior who waits and waits and works his tail off and gets his turn. And then Patrick, I guess your catch against South Horn will be a catch that we'll all remember in our program for this championship season. And all of these guys together is what makes our program special. So it's really hard to say goodbye to seniors like this, but I'm glad we finally got to come here and recognize them because of the hard work they did in this strange and crazy season we had. We kept saying, what a better way to end it. And we actually finished the deal, and it was very special. So thanks for having us.
And if you're a parent of one of these up here, stand up.
Thank you.
Got to stand up.
Yeah. Thank you.
Congrats.
Good luck next year, you all.
Coach, congratulations. Guys, best wishes to you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Well, he's near and dear to me still. And our kids don't know him so much, but we remember him in our building.
Congratulations. Thank you. I should not say congratulations to Hillary.
My uncle's 10%. Jimmy Baker.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Hillary's my uncle.
You can't even breathe without her.
I'm going to yield my time to Commissioner Dana Beasley Brown. Would like to make an announcement.
Yes, both of our school systems are so incredible. We have lots to celebrate. So we have more exciting news. UFL junior and former Greenwood student Tanner Cummings made the time cut in the 50 freestyle to qualify for the Olympic Trials in June, and he is the son of Barry and Lisa Cummings. And then we also have Greenwood senior Luke Shirds also made the time cut in the 100 breast stroke to qualify for the Olympic Trials in June, and he is the son of Adam and Jenny Shirds. So congrats to Tanner and Luke. The whole city of Bowling Green is going to be cheering you all on in June for the Olympic Trials. So just congratulations to them as well.
On WNYC, that's where it's going to be.
Yeah.
In June. Shameless plug.
Thank you. That's fantastic and awesome for our city, and a round of applause for them. Mr. Mizold, would you have comments at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to request that we table item number 11, Municipal Order 2021-63 until the next meeting. We need just to do a little more work, some loose ends on that one, so.
Item number 11.
I move that we table item 11.
Second.
Right, moved by Commissioner Hill, seconded by Commissioner Carlos Bailey. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. All right, Mr. Mizold, any other comments?
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. First item is our regular meeting, April 2021, Approval of Amendments.
So move.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Hill, seconded by Commissioner Perigin. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. All right, Mr. Mizold, any other comments?
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. First item is our regular meeting, April 2021, Approval of Amendments.
So move.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Hill, seconded by Commissioner Perigin. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. All right, Municipal Order Number 2021-53.
Municipal Order approving the reappointment of John Bailey to the Bowling Green Warren County Regional Airport Board.
So move. Second.
By Commissioner Hill, seconded by Commissioner Perigin. I'd like to take this one. I have the awesome ability to be able to appoint members of our community to particular boards, and the next three agenda items are mine. We have board members serving, and they have served our community very well. I was able to talk to our airport members, some of the board. I was able to talk to Susan Harmon. She's the board director for the airport, and she highly recommends John Bailey, which is a WKU police officer. He's also been a pilot for 12 years. In my understanding, he's one of the few pilot members on the board, which I think is important to have that aspect and understanding. And I would like support in recommending and supporting a vote for Mr. John Bailey tonight. Any comments at this time? All right, roll call, please.
Bailey. Beasley...
I apologize. I don't know if anyone's trying to stop you. If I need abstain, John is actually my first cousin, so I don't know if there's a conflict there that I need abstain or not.
Unless you just feel like you need to abstain.
Oh, well, yes, then. If there's no conflict, then yes.
All right, understand.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-54.
Municipal Order approving the reappointments of Russell Brown, Gregory Seaton, and John Williams to the Urban Growth Design Review Board.
So move. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, seconded by Commissioner Perigin. Also, I took the opportunity, I did not know Mr. Seaton or Mr. Williams, but in my understanding, I've reached out to them, I've talked to them, I've thanked them for their board. They're willing to continue their work on the Urban Growth Design Review Board. And I just give you a little information. Mr. Brown, he has two kids, one at UK, one at Louisville. They're both on scholarship. He is a home builder in our community. He has interesting conversations when his sons come home to talk about who's the best program in the state of Kentucky. But his son plays for Louisville, and he proudly wears both colors for his sons. But his son plays for Louisville for the baseball team there. Mr. Seaton, banker, finance for 26 years. He's also retired from Walmart, an outstanding community member. He would like to continue to serve on the board. And Mr. John Williams, an architect, he has a business here in our community, has eight employees in the town of Bowling Green, and he also has some internships that are available, and he's mentoring new and fostering new work into our community for architect business. So those are our three members that I recommend to this board for approval tonight. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-55.
Municipal Order approving the reappointment of Alex Downing to the University District Review Committee.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Dana Beasley Brown, seconded by Commissioner Melinda Hill. I'd like to recognize Alex Downing. Many know the name, synonymous with the Downing Building, synonymous with Western Kentucky. He is the president for Franklin Bank. He was the CEO prior to that, an outstanding community member, has done outstanding work on this board, and he's like, I asked him, and he was willing to serve again, and so I appreciate his service to the University District Review, and I'd like to recommend Mr. Alex Downing for this appointment tonight. No, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-56.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2021-32 for aquatic chemicals from Madison Swimming Pool Company of Goodlettsville, Tennessee, in the amount of $67,848.
So move. Second.
Right, moved by Commissioner Perigin, seconded by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizold.
Mayor, parks recently went out for bid to price some aquatics chemicals for three locations, Russell Sims Aquatic Center, Limestone Springs at Lambkin Park, and Fountain at Circus Square Park. We got two bids, one from Spear Corporation, one from Madison Swimming Pool Company in Goodlettsville, Tennessee. They were the low bid. It was an evaluated bid, but they were also low price as well, and we were recommending purchase from them, difference of around $9,000, $10,000 that we're saving with that bid. So Brent Belcher is here, can answer any question you might have on this.
Okay. I guess it's for Mr. Belcher. Sorry. I was just, were we able to get these chemicals before the prices of chlorine skyrocketed? Or how did the prices compare to the last time we bought it?
Typically, we buy chemicals every year. The only reason we didn't buy last year is we didn't open. So we actually have chemicals remaining from what we'll call the year of 2019 purchase that we actually purchased chemicals for that exact reason, that our startup chemicals are really what we have remaining from the previous year. So we'll be using oddly enough Spear Corporation chemicals to begin the year, and these new chemicals will come in after the year. There's always inflation with pool chemicals, so it's a yearly purchase. So really, we just didn't buy chemicals last year is what it amounts to. So there's, we don't have a way to not do that. You can't keep chemicals around for years. So hopefully that answers your question.
I just got a quick question. I was just out of curiosity. I know we have a couple pool companies here in Bowling Green, but I don't see any of them on this bid list. Is this something they don't do?
Oh, this is, these are distributors for large manufacturers.
Okay, so you're buying it wholesale.
That's right.
Got it.
These, this is not locally owned pool shops. These are distributors of large manufacturer companies.
Got it. That makes perfect sense.
Yeah, they divide the United States into regions.
Thanks.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-57.
Municipal Order authorizing the continuation of a contract with J&amp;F Janitorial Services Incorporated of Somerset, Kentucky, for janitorial services in the amount of $210,820.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, seconded by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizold.
We bid out janitorial services for nine facilities listed on your memo there last year and awarded that to J&amp;F in April of last year for $210,820. They are willing to do the same services at the same price for another year. We had a, we built in renewal for up to four years in that contract, and they have given us good service and are willing to re-up for the same amount again, and we are requesting a renewal to be done with J&amp;F. Greg Meredith is here, can answer any questions you might have about this contract.
Questions or comments?
I have a question, and it's kind of similar to what Commissioner Perigin. Was there no bowling company that had a bid in here?
There were bids last year that we, I think we got five bids last year, two were, four or five, a couple were non-responsive, but J&amp;F was the best bid last year.
All the employees live here, though.
Yeah.
Everybody they hire that comes in to clean the buildings and things, they all live here, work here.
Thank you for that.
I think that matters to me.
Right.
All right, no further comments. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-58.
Municipal Order authorizing the continuation of a contract for concrete with Garrett Brothers Continuous Mix Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $54,995.
So move. Second.
By Commissioner Hill, seconded by Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Similar situation. We went out for bid last year for concrete and Garrett Brothers Continuous Mix, formerly Kenway Concrete, as of a couple years ago, but Garrett Brothers bought Kenway. They were the low bidder last year, and we have an option to renew with them for the same price. And in your packets is a letter from Mr. Fred Meyer at Garrett Brothers guaranteeing that price for another fiscal year, '22. More than one company, I'm sorry, department uses concrete. This might be public works, it might be parks, but we can go to this bid and call up and order concrete at a fixed price, so, per unit, so request renewal of this one, too.
Comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-59.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2021-33 for the purchase of police vehicles from Gilly Hyde Chrysler Incorporated of Glasgow, Kentucky, in the amount of $351,326.
So move. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, seconded by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizold.
We went out for bids on this a couple weeks ago. We were originally needing eight V8 police cruisers and two V6 Dodge Chargers for police. Come to find out, we've had some accidents. We need two more V8 police cruisers, so we've upped that to 10. But we bid out, and based on the eight and the two, unit prices are before you in your packets. Gilly Hyde Chrysler was the low bidder, roughly $6,000 difference both on the V8 model and the V6 model. We contacted them after we found out that we needed two more, and they went ahead and gave us the same price for the additional two V8 cruisers at the $30,878 unit price. So total price of this is the $293,376 number. We have money in our equipment replacement fund, Fund 301, for this purchase, so would like for you to approve this. We can buy police cars.
This makes me miss Commissioner Denning, because I know he would have said something to Chief Delaney about these two car crashes, so I just have to say that.
Some are not, some are not our fault, so you can't...
But you know he'd like to get in those ribbons when he could.
One was sitting and taking care of business last, over a week ago, and was hit by a person driving too fast down 31W and caused catastrophe. However, our police and fire were both there. The good news is no one was hurt in that accident. All right.
Do we recoup, I guess, anything from the insurance from the tort feeser? We do?
Good comments. All right, roll call.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-60.
Municipal Order approving the Year 18 Annual Action Plan of the Consolidated Plan for Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Funding and authorizing its submission to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, seconded by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizold.
So we were recently notified back in the spring that we would receive $679,717 in CDBG funding for FY '22. Mr. Childers and Mr. Cook have put together a plan here for this, what we call Year 18, which involves the FY '22 allocation. Before you tonight, in your memo there, we are proposing to set aside this money, $544,000 by 45, roughly, set aside for Census Block 102.1, which is down the street here towards the river, which encompasses the Shakrag neighborhood and Lee Square, that area. We are proposing to take this year's money and next year's money and allocate it as it's shown in your memo there, $1,050,000 for affordable housing, neighborhood stabilization, another $300,000 for pedestrian facility improvements such as sidewalks, another $150,000 for neighborhood identity enhancements, historic preservation. That includes signage, pedestrian lighting, and then we get roughly $100,000 in admin for, for housing. So Human Rights is also beneficiary of this money as well. We're proposing to allocate $35,000 to Human Rights Commission, and they had a public hearing on April 15th to review this draft, and there was a comment period that was open from March 25th to April 23rd, and all consideration was given to any citizen comments made. So Nick and Brent are here tonight, this afternoon. If you need to answer, ask them any questions. But this is the plan we have for CDBG money coming.
I know that some citizens had like a, I know, can we streamline it to basically file the application? Is there a way, just for the benefit of the citizens, who's basically trying to have application to get some of the grant money? How can they do that?
Right now, we don't have the programs established for any application. So right now, they're all in these broad themes of neighborhood improvements and stabilization, things like that. So that will come in the next phase as we really start fine tuning what those programs are. So that'll be, that'll come at that stage. And some, then it'll be who's implementing them? Is that something we do, or is that something we contract out? So we're really trying to tailor to the needs of the specific neighborhood. So right now, it's really about, from this planning perspective, of where are we going to invest our money? And 70% of our money is in this housing improvements, and so we're not sure exactly what that will look like, what specifically, how are we going to invest that 70%, but we know that's where a bulk of our money is going into.
Just also for the benefit of the citizen, how, do you know, I guess, a percentage? I believe that there was an email that was sent pretty much to every one of us, the commissioners, and maybe like some, maybe even yourself, that for our minorities, you know, for how would it affect the percentage? I believe that in the email from Ms. Townsend, she said that they had a percentage of 98% went to, you know, non, you know, I guess, white people, but then I think 2% only went to like, towards African Americans and minorities when they looked at it. But the grants didn't go trickle down to like minority people that lived in the neighborhood. How can we make sure, and how can we make sure that, I guess, that we can get some of those grants that's going to affect some of the minority people that's living in Shakrag community?
I'm not sure what email you're talking about, or 98% or 2%. I'm not sure what program or anything that you're talking about. But what we look at it in terms of is, how do we improve the neighborhood? How do we make beneficial impact to the neighborhood? So we're looking at it from a geographic area. And if you look at this, this area from a geographic area, it is a mix of different neighborhoods and different collections. It's a very broad area, because it all the way, comes all the way up to 8th Street, so it's really right outside of our office, there by the CHC office. And so you have different pockets and population densities and different makeups within this larger area. So what we're looking at is, how do we improve that area? Now, who gets the money and when? Well, just depend on the programs. I mean, there could be no programs that the individual gets, or there could be a lot of programs that the individual gets, but it's all going to be focused on, how do we make investments that improve the neighborhood? That is our focus. So that's why we call it the Neighborhood Improvement Program, to make sure that we're targeting these investments and these long-term investments into improvements for the overall benefit of the neighborhood. Because we understand people move in, people move out of neighborhoods, but if we make these long-term investments in, then whoever's going to move in this neighborhood or move out of this neighborhood down the line gets the benefit from the investments that we have.
Brent, can you explain the boundaries of the 102?
Yeah. As best I can. So if you start on the, at the bypass Shell Station there on Fairview, it will go all the way down the bypass, so this will be everything on the left side, okay? Because the center of the road is the dividing line. So bypass, Shell Station, come past Med Center, all the way down to Kentucky Street, come up Kentucky Street to about 8th. Come 8th, there's a little bit of jog around Orchard and Park and High, right there below the Med Center main office on the hill, and then it comes back down into Fairview to back out to the corner of Fairview and the bypass. So that's what makes this neighborhood really unique, is you have a tremendous amount of commercial investment on the fringe areas with Fairview and the bypass, but you also And then it comes back down into Fairview to back out to the corner of Fairview and the bypass. So that's what makes this neighborhood really unique, is you have a tremendous amount of commercial investment on the fringe areas with Fairview and the bypass. But you also have a very large institutional pressure that is placed on the neighborhood with the Medical Center and Grace Gilbert, where their tremendous influence and demand for property as they continue to grow. So we looked at this and there's really about three pockets of residential development in this area, Shake Rag being one of those, the other one being up the hill towards us along Eighth, just behind the Upper East Main Historic District. And then you have some residential kind of behind the commercial along Fairview. Outside of that, it's a heavily commercialized area. But we still wanted to preserve that neighborhood stability because of those institutional pressures. So that's why we're looking at how best can we make those investments using that 70% of that housing to really address some of the issues that we heard from the citizens about blight, about lack of maintenance, about lack of affordable housing? What are the best ways that we can, that we can do that? If you kind of pivot this to our last neighborhood area, 1033 and 1034, which was Old Morgantown Road to Morgantown Road, that kind of triangle area, that was almost 100% residential, all built out, no vacant lots, house, 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 house. So it was a little bit more straightforward. We knew that we needed to go in there and help people buy some houses and fix up some houses and it was very straightforward. You only had a little bit of commercial on the lower end where Old Morgantown Road and Morgantown Road meet down around Minut Mart, what I call Woods Market. It's not Woods Market anymore, but that's what I call it. But in this area, it's much different. We've got the Parks and Rec investment along the Kentucky Street corridor, which the city's made tremendous investments in this area. So it's really about how do we take this, this pocket of money and stabilize and ensure that this continues to be a neighborhood moving forward.
And I appreciate, I guess, what you're saying, I do, Mr. Childers. I know, I believe that there was a study back in 2017. And in that study, it showed, I guess, how the money was allocated. And I do think it was allocated that it was fair. But when they looked at it, it looked like only maybe 2% minorities actually benefited from the investments. I know right now that the investments probably didn't even include like the sidewalks and maybe, you know, I think, I think you said the trash cans and just litter, just different things.
There's been a variety of different things. The only study that I can think of from 2017 that you might be referring to is our housing study, which really looked at the housing market of Bowling Green, Warren County as a whole. We really did that as a cross-section of the housing market. Because we have continued growth and we've seen continued growth for the last several years, we wanted to understand what are the needs of the housing market? What are we seeing out there? If you're referring to something else, I'd be glad to take a look at it. But it's hard for me to answer questions about something that I don't know what it is that you're asking me questions about.
That's fair enough. And I just, I just want to guess, for the benefit of the, you know, the people that's living in there, just to make sure that the money, the investment is going to be shared all the way around, especially for some of the individuals that live in that community towards Shake Rag.
This is a federal program.
Right.
So there are a lot of federal rules that we have to follow. And what our focus is going to be improvements and investments in the neighborhood. And those can come in a variety of different ways. But the focus that we heard from the citizens and also the focus that we heard from our own staff that did these walks and tours and went through the neighborhood, was we really need to focus in on housing. For us to put that much money into housing is really a big step and, but it also kind of speaks to the flexibility of the Neighborhood Improvements Program to talk about how we can really focus in on what are the needs of this specific neighborhood. And for this specific neighborhood, this is what we heard from the people and this is what we heard from staff. And those two lined up and that's where we're, we're going to put it. Now, now comes the hard part of, now how do you go about it? What are those vehicles?
Right.
And there's a lot of different ways to make those investment vehicles work. We've done them through cost share grant programs where the, the individual who owns the property gets a benefit. We've done them through organizations. And so now we have to decide what are the best ways to do that. But it always comes back to our central focus of making investments for the improvement of the neighborhood. And that's what we're looking at.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions from the commission?
I have some follow-up questions.
Go ahead.
I was excited to see how many of the public were involved in that public comment period and just gave lots of great insight into that neighborhood and the things that they need. And just for their sake, if they want to continue to be involved, once, it sounds like it's kind of more high level now, but then it'll kind of shake down and go a little bit more specific. So how can they, number one, kind of stay informed, know when it becomes more specific? And then, two, are there any other opportunities for them to give input? Or is that time over?
No, 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 no. We sent out postcards to everybody that owned property or resided in the neighborhood. We, you know, we didn't, we weren't able to do our general in-person public meeting because of COVID, so we had to do that virtually, which was a little bit more challenging. But still, ncs.info@bgkyy.org is kind of the.
Say that again, a little bit slower.
That's an email address that we use because Nick and I both share that. So if one of us is out, we can both check it. And that's, that's kind of our catch-all for these types of programs. And that way, we're pushing that out to the public. Another thing is, you know, citizen input is a part of what we do as part of this process. So as we start rolling these out, there will be other opportunities for engagement. Our planning process requires the public hearings and all that. And that was really just to kind of set these big, bold kind of parameters of investment. The other thing I want to add, Mr. Mazel touched on it, but want to make sure you all understand, this is two years' worth of funding. So this is, tonight you're approving the year 18 annual action plan. This will be the same type of thing that will be in the year 19 annual action plan next year. So we don't have all the money yet to do this. So that's, it will be a phased approach to this. So this, in 12 months from now, on the first Tuesday in May of 2022, we'll be back for the year 19 annual action plan that will have a lot of the same things in it. And that's as we roll out that, the second round of that. So we do these in two, one planning, two years of funding, and then we'll reset that in the next neighborhood area.
And so what's the timeline then? When will it be get more specific? And then when will you start hand, giving the money out? And when will you start to see impact on that?
Well, and it'll just come down to what those investment vehicles will look like. So the money will start to flow like that. It'll probably be this summer before we get into the kind of specific type. We have to submit this off to HUD. They have 45 days to review. So July 1 is when our year 18 annual action plan really starts. So that's what we'll be focused on, is at that point to really start seeing, okay, what can we accomplish? What are some of the things that we can get started on? Probably first and foremost will probably be some of the pedestrian improvements, some of those hard infrastructure improvements, piggyback on some of the things that are already going on in this area as we start with the streetscape, some of the other striping. Just go ahead and piggyback on some of those with Public Works. And those are a little bit easier to kind of get off the ground. Some of the housing programs take a little bit more development and fine tuning. So we'll need more time on this.
Thank you so much. That's all I had.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Childers. All right, roll call, please.
Haley.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2021-61.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of an application for the 2022 National Fitness Campaign Healthy City Grant in an amount up to $30,000 for an outdoor fitness center at Lover's Lane Soccer Complex.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mazel.
Would like your permission to submit for this grant of $30,000. We would put it along with some funding in the future toward an outdoor fitness workout setup similar to what we did out at Preston Miller. Some of you all attended that ribbon cutting a couple of years ago. We got some grant money for that one as well. But this would be some seed money for an outdoor fitness. We've got kind of a, give you an idea of what it would be like in your packets there, where people could just walk up and exercise and work out. But Brent Belcher is here, can answer any of your questions you might have on this. But would like to get, get this 30,000 to kind of get this started.
Where's the location that you're inclined to put this?
It'd be close to the trail, but Brent can tell you.
On the Briarwood Elementary side, by the, the small shelter that we put there within the past couple of years, it'd be to the right of that. This is roughly a 38 by 38, actually, that's, that's exact. It's a 38 by 38 spot. So roughly 40 by 40 is what the, the square footage is.
I just want to express the Briarwood Trail was opened up officially this week and it's a beautiful trail.
Talking about, that was.
Sorry.
Yeah, not the Briarwood Trail.
The Jennings Creek.
The Jennings Creek Trail.
But the Jennings Creek is a beautiful, wonderful, it'd be another location possibility as well. So absolutely.
Is this the first, I guess, you mentioned that they have one at Preston Miller? Really? I didn't know that they had one already.
By the sand volleyball courts.
Nice.
It's really cool.
Preston Miller's is an outdoor workout facility. This is a little bit different. If you look, there's actually no machines on this one. This is a national fitness campaign. So these, you would see this exact same setup at other cities. There's only two other cities in the state currently have one. One's a military base and the other's in Covington currently right now. But yeah, that's, so anywhere in the nation, it would be the exact same setup. They have an app to follow with a workout routine, that sort of, sort of thing. So this is, the reason why we have to ask you now is the grant calendar and our FY budgets don't really align very well. This is not a project we would do in the current fiscal year, or I'm sorry, in the next fiscal year. It'd be something we'd be looking to do in FY '23, yeah, '23 budget year, if approved. So.
Thanks.
I'm super excited about this. The apparatus that's on here, I can see the, all the soccer teams and the parents while they're waiting for their kid to practice. It's some agility apparatuses and some really just amazing. I'm so excited. That, that park is packed all the time with families and kids and teens. And yeah, this is just going to be such a great addition. And I could just see all kinds of people using it and I'm, this is amazing.
Ideally, it's, it's, you know, Preston Miller and Lover's Lane sit on each opposite sides of the city. So that's, that's the other benefit of us doing, that's why we targeted Lover's Lane. And, and so hopefully that's.
Brent, are you seeing a lot of usage out of the Preston Miller workout facility outdoor?
You know, COVID in general brought a lot of usage in a lot of different ways. That is one of the places that it was extremely high because unplanned, of course, but.
Couldn't go to gyms.
They couldn't go to gyms. So they could work out every day there.
Still going good?
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's, yeah.
It's a really cool place.
It's, it's, yeah, it's been a really big addition that we've, we're pretty happy with.
To be honest with you, I wish I would have knew about like, the one at Preston Miller last year. Because like, exactly what you said, no one could go to the gym.
The key word is both of these are, you know, they're free access.
Right.
So, you know, it takes some, regardless of socioeconomic impact, you know, they can go and use these absolutely free of charge. They can use the trail, use the fitness and hopefully become better, more healthy.
I think a lot of people didn't renew their gym membership, which I think is kind of sad. I've got a couple of friends that, that actually own gyms and it's, it's been kind of hard on them. People figured out how to work out without the gym. Hopefully they'll get back to it. Thank you, Mr. Belcher. Roll call, please.
Haley.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2021-62.
Municipal order approving the GO BG Transit Drug and Alcohol Substance Abuse Policy for Safety Sensitive Employees and Job Functions for the City of Bowling Green Transit Program.
So moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perrigen. Mr. Mazel.
So first of all, before I forget, I would like to introduce to you all Mr. Robert Gill. He's sitting in the back here. He is our transit manager that works, oversees our GO BG Transit system. And he has helped us with this policy before you tonight. It's a drug and alcohol policy that, that's required by the FTA. And we didn't, we didn't have too many things wrong, but just a few tweaks, right, Robert? And we had a compliance audit done and they came and made, made some recommendations. And before you tonight is the new revised drug and alcohol policy before you, which strictly prohibits the use of illicit drugs, alcohol prior to performing safety sensitive functions while on call under investigation due to involvement in an accident. This is, covers pre-employment, random, post-accident, reasonable suspicion, return to duty, follow-up testing, all, all the usual stuff in a drug and alcohol policy. But this is strictly for our transit system, the drivers and employees of that. So Robert is here, Brent's here, Nick's here. Surely 23 of you guys can answer any questions y'all may have, so. But, but appreciate your support of this and we need, we just need your permission to, to move this along.
Commissioner.
I would just like to publicly thank Mr. Gill for being here and bringing this to us. I had the opportunity to meet with him. He took a lot of time to explain his plans for our transit system. So thank you and appreciate and glad you are in Bowling Green. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the extra assurance you're putting in to keep our public safe. And then it's, it's a job that probably goes unlooked, but our public transit is part of Bowling Green and we'd like to see it continue and grow. So thank you.
We are very fortunate to have Robert. He's a professional in, in the business. And you came from Texas, right, Robert? So he's, he's got a lot of experience with transit. So very fortunate to get him on board.
And does he work for the management company? Or? Great. Welcome to Bowling Green.
We called him one of ours, but, but.
That's great.
Technically not. But we consider him part of the family.
Roll call, please.
Haley.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2021-63.
Put a 64.
Oh, we put, sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Municipal order number 2021-64.
Municipal order approving the sidewalk projects for the fiscal year 2021 Greenways Program, including design and survey and authorizing the city law department to negotiate the purchase of properties necessary for these projects and further authorizing appropriate city officials to execute deeds, easements and other documents related to land purchases necessary for the projects.
Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perrigen. Mr. Mazel.
So as you all, if you can remember back to January, it seemed like a long time ago, but we did talk about Greenways and that was a high priority of pretty much all five of you. And so we went to the drawing board and Greg and his department have put together this plan. And we would like to get this thing going with these two projects in your packet tonight. The first one is on Small House between Campbell Lane and Thimblefinger. It's roughly 699 linear feet. And then the other one is from Shive Lane to Scottsville Road along Brightway would be a nice project of 2,300 feet that would connect that neighborhood to Scottsville Road, get them across Scottsville Road over to the mall. And so Greg has, has worked on this along with Kyle Hunt. Like to thank them for their work on this. But you've got some photos in your packet of, of where these would go. And I'll turn it over to Greg if you all have any questions on this.
I have a question.
Yes.
Would you mind letting the public know sort of what the processes of how we select these particular locations?
Sure, sure. It's the, basically the same selection criteria we use for our sidewalks. Just like sidewalks, greenway, there are always more candidates than there are money to go around to build. So we look at things like compatibility, we look at constructability, we looked at, at the connections on either end of these segments to make sure they make sense and they actually connect. For Greenways, we look at, for parks and schools primarily for this program is how we select. And it's the overall connection and connectivity of the sidewalks and the Greenways. So we use the same criteria for both programs.
Oh, I know. There have been quite a few pedestrian accidents along this section of Scottsville Road. So do, will the state, since the Scottsville Road is a state road, will we be able to add some, you know, safer pedestrian striping when we put this greenway in? Or how does that tie in to Scottsville Road since the greenway, it looks like it stops right there when it hits?
The state recently has agreed to provide the striping, the, the Greenways crosshatching like a pedestrian crossing. The only difference with the greenway, it's a bit wider, it's eight foot rather than the normal five foot for a sidewalk. And so they not only agree to do that, but they're going to, on the mall side, they're going to make sure that connection crosses the mall entrance as well. So from what used to be Pizza Hut, that I understand has gone out, and Longhorn on the other side, you, we'll be able to connect and extend the greenway path down in front of the mall either way, if in, in fact, we can fund that and that connection's important. So, yeah, we looked, it's hard to find a place to cross Scottsville Road. And you know, as well as I do, like you mentioned, there are a lot of people that, that either, you know, patronize the mall from there or work at the mall. So the worst thing I've seen at night, and you all have seen it too, folks in dark clothing decide to scamper across against the light, you know, and it's really dangerous. So hopefully this will provide them a safe place that they'll recognize, they'll gravitate to and cross without so much danger.
Yeah, I'm excited about those additional state improvements along Scottsville Road. That's great. On the other end, Shive Lane, that's before you get to the new roundabout?
It is, yes.
Okay. And?
It's actually near where the roundabout at Middle Bridge is going to go. So Win Electric, I think, is on that corner, so.
Okay. And then our goal is to hopefully make this greenway attached to, for them to be able to get to this new athletic pad here with all they can work out to try to get to Lover's Lane Soccer Conference. Is that correct? Some time in the future?
Ultimately, yes.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Meredith. No further comments. Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal order number 2021-65.
Municipal order approving and authorizing the execution of a lease agreement for a portion of the Glen Lilly landfill property.
So moved? Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Paragon, Mr. Mazel.
Thank you, Mayor. We were recently approached by a neighborhood farmer out around the Glen Lilly landfill area, the property that we own, and they were interested in leasing approximately, I think it's actually 9.3 to be exact, between nine and 10 acres that we own out there. It's not on the landfill, it's, it's kind of a, close to an adjoining landfill. This gentleman also farms adjacent property, so he would like to add another, close to 10 acres to farm. Matt Powell has talked to him a few times. Hillary worked on this lease. It would be a five-year lease. First year, we would do $80 per acre, and then every year after that, we would do $100 per acre. This is something I wanted to bring to you all. It's under, it would be under my jurisdiction to go ahead and do this, given the amount of money it is. It's not a whole lot of money, but I wanted to bring this to you all for transparency's sake, given it's close to the landfill, and we've talked about other purposes out there. But this would not interfere with the other purposes we have discussed here before. So we thought this would be a good use of the land, maybe add even more nutrients and get the soil in better shape with the crops and what he would be doing out there with the land. So I think Greg has been involved with this as well, and maybe can help me answer any questions you might have on this. But we thought this is just a simple 10-acre lease for the next four or five years. It's not in our way, would not impede for us maintaining the landfill. It's kind of off to the side, to the left of where you go into the landfill land, so 10 acres.
So, Mr. Mazel, in 2019, there was a story that was ran in the BG Daily News. And I forget, he was talking about the environmentalist that was here in Bowling Green. And it talked about some of the sludge, and I guess Louisville comes twice a week just for that landfill that was, that had trash on it since 1973, or 50-year-old trash. And they said it looked like candy cane. Would it be wise for us to possibly give him like just a little bit of land and to grow the crops, and then kind of send it off to a lab just to try to get it, you know, tested? I don't know if we want to get it like the short routes first, just to get it tested, just to make sure before he sells anything to the public that it's safe.
I think this is not on the landfill land. This is, this is a ways off. This Greg can answer.
This is not in the watershed. There's no leachate that runs from the landfill toward this property. It's totally separate. It was just as the landfill property sold, it was a portion of that that was added on, if you will. It's like a, if you see the map, you have the map in front of you. The landfill portion is probably 1,500 feet away. There's no influence at all from groundwater leachate into this property.
This blue area is the 9.3 acres. This little square here is the, is the radio tower that you see when you drive into the property. The landfill area is well on back behind the tower after you get down the road and it makes the 90-degree turn.
Have they done any tests just to make sure that there hasn't been any, you know, spillage over to the other land? Because if we have like Louisville and, you know, that's come twice, I believe, a month? Yeah, I could be wrong, but back in 2019, they were coming twice a month just to get some of the, I believe he said it was kind of like black candy cane sludge or something?
I'm not certain about that. We, we before have had a company come and pump the leachate and take it and dispose of it, but I'm not sure of that, of that description there on that landfill. I don't think so. Commissioner Bailey? And so, go ahead.
I know, Carlos, this landfill is definitely in compliance, and Matt Powell takes really good care of it. And he does have someone when the tanks are full, but all of the leachate goes through, and Greg can explain it better, but it has a system where it all goes to a tank. So when, when the tank has to be drained, we do pay someone to pick it up. But it doesn't, it's not just going out into the land. It has to go through these certain tubes into the tank.
Yeah, think of the landfill as kind of on a ridge, kind of like a mountain. And so on either side, there's a collection tank that connects to the body of the landfill. That's where that leachate runs. It goes into those tanks where it doesn't spill over into the surrounding creeks or, or soil. So it's contained, and it wouldn't be in this part of the, of the property at all.
And I apologize, I'm gonna just ask you one last time, but do we have like any type of proof from that soil?
It's never been a requirement to test that soil because it's totally out of the influence area.
And the only reason why I ask that is because I believe that they put clay on there twice.
They put a clay soil cap to, to prevent not only infiltration, but anything coming out too. Right?
And they found 31 pollutants that was in that landfill back in 2010, I believe.
Yeah, I mean, there's absolutely probably things in that landfill, but it doesn't have any influence over here. Again, that, that's why the collection system's there, to make sure that if there are bad things and they come out, we catch them and dispose of them properly.
And I understand that, but would it be safe just to kind of find out, you know, for, at least for him, to just a little small area, to grow like some short root crops, to send it off to a lab and just kind of find out, just to make sure?
I mean, he certainly could do that. I don't know how we could require him to do that. Hillary, do you?
I would suggest we talk to Matt Powell about it, and see. Matt is an expert on these landfills. He's very knowledgeable and.
That's fair enough.
I do know he sends samples from areas around the landfill and gets them tested. But again, this is, this is far off, and the landfill has never, this part has never been used for a landfill or connected to the portion of the landfill. So I would call and talk to Matt Powell about it. He would definitely be able to answer all of your questions. And he can take you out there, show you the landfill, where it is exactly.
But we're voting on it tonight, though, right?
Right.
And, and if Matt had any concern, he certainly would not have.
Wouldn't have brought this.
He would not have recommended farming on this land.
All right, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Bailey?
No.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2021-21. This is our first reading, it's non-binding.
Ordinance approving amendment to amended and restated ground lease. An ordinance of the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, authorizing an amended and restated ground lease with the Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated.
So moved? Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Paragon, Mr. Mazel.
I'm gonna take a stab at explaining to you all the whole financial structure of the ITA and the Trans Park and the financing. But basically, the city issued geo-bonds in 2007 for the Trans Park. And in exchange for that, in order for us to issue bonds, we, we needed something. I guess you'd call it collateral in a way. And so we did a land lease of the whole ITA property from the ITA. And so we used that land lease to say, we kind of sort of have a leasehold on this land. And so we turn around and lease it back to the ITA and the county for bond payments, for their 50% of the bond payment. So we've done that since 2007. Since 2007, there's been a lot of transferring and selling of property up there. And so we felt it was time, discovered it was time, that we needed to clean up and amend our original land lease, or what we call ground lease. And that's what's before you tonight. And so we have, we have a memo actually from the ITA's attorney, Gaines Penn, in here kind of explaining what I tried to explain. You probably did a better job, but it's in that memo. But basically, we are updating and reflecting all the land currently owned by the ITA and also updating the, for the land we did with the 2021 bonds. We just recently did the new land that we bonded. And then we're also amending and updating the, what we call the second supplemental contract lease and option. That's where we lease the land back to the ITA and the county for their portion of the repayment of the city bond. So this is the amended and restated ground lease agreement before you in this, this item 14. And need, would like for you to approve these amendments and changes and updates. And Exhibit A kind of gives you a list of the project sites and everything that was involved in, in that land originally. And Meredith, I'm sorry, Meredith Rosansky is here from the ITA, representing the ITA, and can answer some questions as well as we move through these next three items.
Great. Open for discussion and questions at this time.
Hillary can fill in any gaps, or Katie as well. I don't claim, I don't claim to know it all there, so.
I'm gonna make a comment. Jeff and I serve on this board, on the ITA board, and it's, it's really incredible. Melinda used to serve on the board. It's really incredible what's going on out there, in spite of a pandemic, in spite of everything else that's, that's been, every curveball and known demand been thrown at us. We're growing. I think there's three projects right now going on out there, three good projects with good-paying jobs. And, you know, I can't express enough how proud I am of being on the board and serving alongside Jeff, but every time we go to the meeting, it's a, it's a laundry list of prospects that are actually looking at our community, so.
Really good ones, too.
Really good ones. So anybody looking for work out there, get on out to the Trans Park, they got plenty of it. We need you.
I'd like to say, so it was an honor that I actually worked for the ITA when it was first a vision. So it's an honor to see it come through and how successful it is. So thank you, Chamber of Commerce. Meredith, thank you all so much.
Commissioner Hill helped get us through the lean years in the early days.
That's right, yes.
That's great. They do an outstanding job.
Good to see the next chapter continue and the success continue. And we applaud the community effort from our county and from our city chamber, and from the commitment that we have from the commissioners here to continue on. And we've made the second investment, and the wave's already coming. And we're very proud of the work that has been accomplished over the last decade, and to see the continued prosperity for the City of Bowling Green. We just gotta get people to work, and that's our biggest challenge, which is our greatest challenge. But we'll accept that challenge as well. Thank you.
All right. No further discussion, questions? Roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal order number 2021-66.
Municipal order approving and authorizing conveyance of property by Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated to benefit Ball Metal Beverage Container Corp., approving and authorizing the execution of the partial cancellation and amended and restated ground lease agreement, and second supplemental contract lease and option, and approving and authorizing the execution of a payment in lieu of taxes agreement among the City of Bowling Green, Warren County, Warren County Board of Education, and Ball Metal Beverage Container Corp.
So moved? Second.
By Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mazel.
So as you can see, we tried to throw everything we could into this one ordinance. So this is, or municipal order. It's, this is a kind of a three-in-one. We are conveying property to Ball Metal Beverage Container Corporation. We are canceling what I just talked about, the little leaseback that, on the, on the ground lease. And we're also canceling what I call the lease from the city back to the ITA to release that property. And you guys are, ladies and gentlemen, are approving an in lieu of tax agreement within this, and that's on page three, where they are going, you're gonna allow them to pay, they're gonna pay 100% of Warren County school tax regardless on property taxes, but you're agreeing to give them a 50% tax abatement on the first 10 years of the bonds. Meredith, why don't you take over? Thank, thank you. I messed that up.
First, let me take just a second, if you will, to thank all of you. It has been a crazy ride with this pandemic, not anything anyone expected. And for our community to come together and invest such a large amount of money in the future, it's unheard of. And our colleagues around the country are very envious of that, and I think that is a testament to the success. So we could not do what we do without your help and the help of Warren County. On Ball Beverage Container Corp., this will be our first tenant in the new acreage that you just approved the infrastructure for, so we are wasting no time getting people in there. So on the payment in lieu of taxes, it's typically a 20-year note. So the first 10 years would be 100% abatement of city-county tax, and then the next 10 years would be a 50% abatement of the tax. They're gonna invest $305 million in a 500,000-square-foot facility and create 198 new jobs. And they have an option on some additional property because they intend to continue to grow here. And the cool thing about this project, it will be the, they make the top of beverage cans, so the whole top of the can, it'll be the largest top producer in the world. It's like 40 billion tops per year or something, something ridiculous. It's a very cool project and very good-paying job. So everybody needs to run to Ball Corporation and get a job.
So basically, yeah, going back to this payment in lieu of tax agreement, just want to make sure everyone understands this out in the public as well. But this, Ball did an industrial revenue bond issue, and anytime you do what they call an IRB, it takes, it takes it off the tax roll because it's basically under the name of.
Warren County.
Warren County. And so it's a 20-year bond issue to help get the deal here, and that takes it off the tax roll. But the company is nice enough to agree to still pay 100% taxes to the Warren County School District, whatever, whatever school district it is in usually always, never gets left behind. It always gets full payment. But as an inducement to get them here, the city and county, you guys are agreeing to give them zero, you collect zero for the first 10 years, and then after that, you would get 100% at the end of the term once the bonds are paid. So it goes back on the tax roll, it would go back under the name of Ball Corporation on the, on the tax roll as private property. So that's how that works.
It's never actually technically zero. The, the way the PVA does it through the state is they do it based on a leasehold interest. So the first year, it's 1/20th of the value. The second year, it's 2/20th of the value until whatever happens of the actual amount. So like a 50% is more than the leasehold value would be. 50% is what they get charged in year 11. So there's still something.
Thank you, Meredith.
I have just one question. Mr. Rosansky, and I apologize, I could be butchering your name.
It's okay.
It's nice seeing you again. 198 direct jobs, and I see that it's gonna be like over a 500,000-square-footage building. How many employees can that, I guess, actually have in that building? And what's the, I guess, is it gonna grow? Is there like a number that they're trying to get to once they start taking off ground?
198 would be fully built out, and that would be all of their shifts. So typically, I'm not, to be honest, I'm not totally sure if this is gonna be a two-shift operation or a three-shift. So it would either be half onsite at any one time or a third, depending on how they run that.
Will it just stay at 198?
No, they will grow, they have the ability to grow over town. And like I said, they have option on additional acreage because they do intend to grow their footprint here.
Thank you.
It's a highly automated production.
It is very highly automated, and several of our team members took a tour of their facility in Ohio, and it's crazy fast how it moved.
Good jobs.
Really good job.
Very good jobs.
Reers.
No further comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal order number 2021-67.
Municipal order approving and authorizing conveyance of property by Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated to benefit Veterans Administration and the execution of the partial cancellation of amended and restated ground lease agreement and second supplemental contract lease and option.
So moved? Oh, second.
So this one.
Moved by Melinda Hill, Commissioner Hill, and second by Commissioner Beasley Brown.
This is similar to the, the last one with the Ball. You guys are okay with giving them the land. We gave Ball 40 acres. This one here is, you're, you're saying that you're okay with giving the VA Hospital 25 acres, since we're not selling it for 25,000 an acre. You all have to approve that transaction. That's part of the bond documents from even back to 2007. But you're releasing the, the lease on the land and giving them the green light. And I'd like to turn it over to Meredith to kind of talk about this exciting project. This is something that they've been working on for a long time, and I know Judge Buchanan is excited about this one, too. So Meredith?
This is a great project. Judge Buchanan has actually been working on this since he came into office 25 years ago. So there's been a lot of people in our community involved for a really long time. Again, this is one of those things, the pandemic played in our favor. The stimulus funding allowed the project to actually be funded. They have the funding letter in hand at the state, so they are ready to pull the trigger. For those that are not as familiar, where, specifically where it's going, if you're in the Trans Park and you're up at the top of the hill by the water tower where Crown Corke and Seal is building, they're gonna be right behind that. So that road will be closed, Miz Pal Road will be closed at that property line between the VA facility and Crown Corke and. the VA facility and Crown Corke and Seal, so the VA traffic will go out on Mizpah. Nobody from the interior of the park will exit that way. But very exciting project, a whole lot of people have worked a really long time to come through, and this is a great win for the veterans in our community.
You know, and I want to say thanks to all of our state representatives that just kept after it, kept after it and kept after it and finally got it done. It's going to be great for our veterans here.
Only how many?
I want to echo exactly what Commissioner Paragon said. I think that's something that we have a, a large, you know, veteran and growing veteran population here in Bowling Green, so I'm kind of glad that we have that here, or going to have it here.
I think we all want to say something on this, but, I mean, this, if you know the Spillers, Colonel Spiller, this was a, a dream of his. He's passed, and a lot of rallying, this was almost literally gone about two and a half, three months ago. But a shout out to Congressman Guthrie, Representative Patty Mentor, Representative Steve Sheldon, Representative Michael Mentor, and our state representative, Mike Wilson, our state senator, excuse me. Amazing work, but as a rally, it was a bipartisanship work to take care of the veterans' community. And it's just incredible that this was about lost, but they rallied and worked this, actually during the active for Kentucky Congress, and to be able to transfer the land and then it not work out, and then to find a second property and then transfer the land and push, and all parties came together. I'm sure there's many people that we can thank, but especially the chamber, to you and to Ron, a bunch for rallying that team together. And we just say appreciative to the chamber. Thank you.
You.
All right. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2021-22, first reading and non-binding.
Ordinance Res zoning Real Estate. Ordinance Res zoning Attractive Land Containing 15.7146 Acres From AG Agriculture RM3 Townhouse Multi-Family Residential and HB Highway Business to RM3 Townhouse Multi-Family Residential Located at Zero Cherry Farm Lane, Presently Owned by Fobbush Properties LLC with a Himalaya Kentucky Properties LLC as the applicant.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Paragon, Mr. Mizel.
This was a recommendation from Planning and Zoning. I think it was a nine, zero unanimous recommendation. And Mr. Peterson is here with you tonight to answer any questions you might have.
Comments or questions at this time? None? Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2021-14 is our second reading and is binding.
Ordinance Amending Code of Ordinances. Ordinance Amending Chapter Five Animals of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Paragon, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel. Second reading. No further questions at this time?
No, but additional thanks for no roosters in the city limit. Appreciate that a lot. It just makes sense.
Got to get the education of this out now and educate people.
I guess we have a plan to do that. I'm, I'm not sure how, how that goes.
That's up to Mr. Childress, so he's, I think he's got it covered.
Great work behind this. It's helping out.
He's going to start it, here at 6:15, working on that once this is voted on.
Yeah.
They've been working on it.
I'm, I'm sure there's a lot of folks out there very happy to hear that.
Where did you say you were about to go to? Just don't get any of your roosters.
Ifc.
We have with us a member of our Animal Control Division with us tonight, too, that she's going to be a big help on this as well.
Amazing work. Thank you for what you do.
All right. No more group comments at this time. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2021-15 is our second reading, binding.
Ordinance Amending Code of Ordinances. Ordinance Repealing Existing Chapter 12 and Approving Revised Version of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12. Fire Prevention to Make Various Changes.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. This is our second reading. Any questions? None at this time. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2021-16 is our second reading and binding.
Ordinance Relating to Budget Amendment. Ordinance Approving Amendment Number Three to the City of Bowling Green Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2021.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Paragon, second by Commissioner Hill. It's our second reading as well for operating budget for fiscal year 2021. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2021-17 is our second reading and is binding.
Ordinance Amending Agreement Related to the City-County Planning Commission. Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute Amended and Restated Agreement for the Establishment of the City, Joint City-County Planning Commission for Warren County and the Joint City-County Board of Adjustments.
Move.
Second.
By Commissioner Paragon, second by Commissioner Hill. This is second reading. Are there any comments or questions at this time? Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2021-18, second reading, binding.
Ordinance Res zoning Real Estate. Ordinance Res zoning Attractive Land Containing 6.2686 Acres From AG Agriculture to RS1D Single Family Residential Located at Zero Marlin Drive, Presently Owned by Java Properties LLC.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. This is our second reading and binding. Are there any further comments or questions? None at this time. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2021-19, second reading ends, binding.
Ordinance Res zoning Real Estate. Ordinance Res zoning Attractive Land Containing 0.22 acre From RM3 Townhouse Multi-Family Residential to GB General Business Located at 228 Riverwood Avenue, Presently Owned by Jeffrey Harrison with Tom, Tom Holmes as the applicant.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Paragon, second by Commissioner Hill. This is our second reading. Are there any questions or comments at this time? Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2021-20, second reading, binding.
Ordinance Res zoning Real Estate. Ordinance Res zoning Tracks of Land Containing 13.50 acres From RS1A Single Family Residential to RM3 Townhouse Multi-Family Residential and GB General Business Located at 603 and 611 Highland Way and 2310 Nashville Road, Presently Owned by Sam Potter Jr. and Jeffrey and Betsy Harned.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Paragon. This was a 5-0 vote at the last meeting. Both representatives were available. Mr. Tad Perdue, Mr. Stainback were at the meeting, presented. Unless there are further questions at this time, I believe Mr. Perdue's here. I do not see Mr. Stainback. This is not open for public discussion. Understand?
Not discussing the question.
This is not open for public discussion, sir.
Can a question, is this a question?
Yes, it is.
Do you have an issue with this?
Thank you for adhering. There are any, are there any questions or comments from the commissioners? All right. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. We are open for public comments at this time. Mrs. Jackson, do we have, she's going to get that? Thank you.
If you want to make a public comment, do we need to stop that?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to try to, try to make it to my daughter's strings concert.
Okay, Mr. Will Heller, you may approach. And you feel free to take your mask off if you'd like to speak as well.
Excellent. Thank you all. Thanks for letting me speak today. I'd just like to go through a couple of things. Is Mr. Brent Belcher still here? Yeah, there he is. Um.
He's not here.
No? Oh, one of the other masked guys, sorry. Okay, so you all covered a lot of stuff today. I appreciate your time and the, the efficiency at which they're covered. That was pretty impressive. $65,000 for pool supplies, right? Those go for Russell Aquatic Sims Park and then the other one in Briarwood, correct? Does anyone know the answer to that? Oh, okay, where we have fountains as well, I guess, at some of the parks. Excellent. And then the block grants, y'all covered that. And then there's $30,000 basically going to the Lover's Lane Park for like the outdoor equipment. That's pretty good. The Jennings Creek was just mentioned. It is a nice, beautiful, new trailhead and Greenways Trail. I think it's wonderful. Sidewalks and Greenways were mentioned. And the Ball Metal Beverage Company, I can speak with some knowledge about that. That company is first and foremost a global entity that is skyrocketing because of the liquor industry, which I'm a part of, and they do. They, they make the best cans in the world, and the fact that we're having it here is only going to grow. Their company is growing by leaps and bounds. Their Ohio facility, someone said they got to tour, is magnificent. And then, and any part you all played in bringing that here is great. But I'd like to focus on those parks that you all mentioned and the money going to them. I think that's wonderful. Anyone have any idea if any of those parks happen to be in Zone Two? I do. They're not. So again, I'm looking to the city commission to say, great. Here's a group of people that for 35 years lived in Zone Two, both worked multiple jobs and volunteered in their community and, and paid taxes for 35 years to own their own home in Zone Two of Bowling Green. Now, for 35 years, working multiple jobs, they helped build the curbs in Bent Tree, they helped get new playground equipment at Curiakis, they helped get new playground equipment at Covington Woods. But not a dime was spent from the city to build a park in Zone Two. So for nearly 85 years, Zone Two has been paying taxes, hardworking. I mean, I live next door to a police officer, down the street from a nurse, right next to David Cole, one of the founding members of Cole &amp; Moore. So for 85 years, the city has shown its true color, saying, we will take your money, we will not supply you with any sidewalks. And I can tell you that the sidewalk and Greenways process that was spoken about here is woefully inaccurate for how it goes. That's fine, you don't have to believe me. Many of you might have experienced it yourself in your own neighborhoods, maybe not, but I have. I have. I've experienced it for 35 years. That's not how the process goes, making requests. There are six schools within Zone Two, most of them have no sidewalks, and they all have no parks associated with them. So as, and rightfully so. I mean, we need these chemicals for these fountains, we do. And, and that's great. I, I don't want to deter any park from ever being built here. But when I see thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars being poured into other parks, I have to ask why the city has felt it necessary to not even make an offer for public lands. This very commission sitting in front of me chose this year to prioritize buying private land for city parks, correct? That happened this year. In the middle of a health pandemic, you all prioritized buying private lands within the city of Bowling Green to make neighborhood and community parks. That's very important. Those parks are part of the health-conscious scenario that makes us all healthy. But yet, after prioritizing that, even when lands become available for purchase in Zone Two, how many proposals have been put forth to build a park in Zone Two for 2021? I know the answer. You all do, too, if you read my email. Zero. Okay, that's fine, maybe we can't get to it this year.